Good evening. Our May 23, 2019 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our invocation and pledge will be led by Beatrix Jaggers, a ten-year-old fourth grader at Trinity School of Texas, and Noah Collins, a ten-year-old member of Club Scout PAC 262. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in this state, city, I mean, city, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Beatrix and Noah, thank you all very much for coming to our meeting tonight and giving us the prayer and pledge. We appreciate it very much. Thank you all. Election items. Presentation of the Oath of Office, City Council Member-Elect of District Number Five, Ms. Shepherd.
Do what?
Yes, I will.
I will do that. I state your name.
I, David Wright.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Council.
Of City Council.
Of the City of Longview.
Of the City of Longview.
And the State of Texas.
And the State of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You just can't train them these days anymore.
Congratulations. Proud to serve with you again, friend. Great to be here. Thank you, everybody.
Turn it around so we can see it. It's proof. Thank you. Appreciate you. When I have a presentation of the oath of office, City Council Member-Elect of District Number Six, Ms. Shepherd.
I don't have one for you. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Steve Pertle.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Council.
Of City Council.
Of the City of Longview.
Of the City of Longview.
And the State of Texas.
And the State of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You just can't train them these days anymore.
Congratulations. Proud to serve with you again, friend. Great to be here. Thank you, everybody.
Hang tight, buddy.
Turn it around so we can see it. It's proof.
Thank you. Appreciate you. When I have a presentation of the oath of office, City Council Member-Elect of District Number Six, Ms. Shepherd.
Mr. Pertle.
I don't have one for you.
You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Steve Pertle.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of City Council.
Of City Council.
Of the City of Longview.
Of the City of Longview.
And the State of Texas.
And the State of Texas.
And will.
And will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You already got your certificate. Congratulations. Proud to serve with you again. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Shepherd. And just for you all to know, I'm honored to serve with you guys. You guys did a great job. This is a fantastic council with a cohesive mindset and a forward-thinking group of people. And this is what I think Longview wants, and that's what Longview has put up here. And I think we had that duty and that honor to be able to push longer forward in the way that we're doing. So I appreciate both of you all and all of you that sit at this table. Thank you very much. Tonight, employee recognition. We're going to recognize graduates. The City of Longview encourages employees to pursue higher education. To that end, a tuition reimbursement program and educational assistance advance program are available for full-time employees, ultimately to help prepare them for more responsibility with the city. Numbers vary per semester, but we often have been between eight and twenty employees from several departments throughout the city pursuing associates, bachelors, or masters degrees. It just happens that tonight's graduates are all from the Police Department. Assistant Chief Police Anthony Boone. Chief Boone is an eighteen-year veteran of the Police Department and graduated May 2019 from Tarleton State University with his master's degree in criminal justice. Police Captain Ben Kemper. Captain Ben Kemper is a seventeen-year veteran of the Police Department and graduated May 2019 from the University of Oklahoma with his master's degree in criminal justice. Police Detective Alex Castillo. Detective Alex Castillo is a thirteen-year veteran of the Police Department and graduated in 2019 in May from the University of Texas at Tyler with his bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Detective Castillo is not present tonight. He's attending training in Lufkin. But you're the two guys. Please come forward. Let me just explain something to you. These are two fine gentlemen that represent our Police Department. And to go above and beyond and take the time to do that, it's not an easy thing to do because you're still working full-time. We didn't give you a lot of time off to do this, but you went through and you pursued and you got your masters. And we really appreciate the determination to make yourselves better, which makes you better for our citizens and better for the community as well. So thank you, guys, for the dedication, for your support, and let us know that we support you at all times. Thank you for what you do. All of the best. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, gentlemen. Tonight, in our community recognition, I'm going to recognize the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. I'll have you ladies come up in just a minute, okay? Delta Sigma Theta Sorority incorporates an organization of college-educated women committed to constructive development of its members into public service with a primary focus on the Black community. This is a period in May each year when the chapters emphasize scholastic achievements, educational opportunities, and the encouragement of higher scholarship. In addition to being a public event which has an educational value and captures the community's interest, May Week is often the culminating event of the year for the chapter with emphasis on the year's programs and progress. May Week serves to call attention to the various phases of the Delta Program and can promote good public relations for the chapter. The Longview Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was chartered on July 29, 1972. The members of Longview Alumni have strived to sustain the visions of our founders. We are charged with a commitment of service in the areas we live, work, and worship. Please come forward. Come on up, ladies. Hey, girl. How are you? Good to see you. Have y'all ever seen red look so good? That's some good-looking red, isn't it? I'm just going to tell you, this group of ladies are so special. They do so much that most of us don't even realize. But you know, as I read, their emphasis is in the Black community, but it's not just the Black community. They take care of all aspects, all walks of life, in every situation. They never turn a blind eye to anything, and that's what makes you all so special. Y'all are a great group of ladies. I thank you, Noah, for bringing this forward and letting me have the opportunity to just recognize you all and tell you how much the city appreciates you. I know the citizens as well, and so thank you for what you do. Keep up the good work. Y'all are the best, and keep this red going. I like it. Right here, red, right there. We've got it all. Let's have a picture. Thank you all so much. I appreciate y'all. Thank you. Also tonight, I have two community recognitions. My second one is Mr. Mark Robinson. Mark has no idea that he's here for community recognition. He thought he was going to talk about SWEPCO, I'm sure. But you're not, Mark. Come on up here, buddy. Mark is External Affairs Manager for AEP SWEPCO. Although he wasn't one of the hundreds of linemen physically repairing the power poles after the storm, Mark communicated with the local officials throughout the region. He was an important role in the huge operation to get power back as quickly as possible. He's also very involved with many committees and volunteer efforts throughout the community, including the Longview Chamber of Commerce, Great Longview United Way, Great Texas Blue Race, and many, many more. That's all being said, but let me just tell you what this guy does. He might not have been on those poles, but he'd know every pole that went up and when they went up. He communicated with me throughout this entire process, and it made it such a smooth transition because people... Let me tell you how good this guy is because I would never do this. I'm calling him constantly. He's sending emails. I'm calling constantly. He's out of town at the time. He said, "I'm on an airplane. I'm going to get you back as soon as possible." I'm calling him daily, really almost two or three times a day. "Mark, what about this area? What about this area? Okay, here's the statistics. Here's what we're going to do. Here's how you're going out there. Here's how many men..." I said, "People are calling me." Asked me, he goes, "Give them my phone number." And he meant that. And he said, "Give them my phone number, and I will talk to every person that wants to call." Because I can tell you, the calls are enormous when things like this happen. As an example, my phone was down for about seven hours during this time, had 187 text messages and 141 missed calls in about a seven-hour period of time. Mark is the kind of guy that says, "I will step up and I'll take that responsibility because I can't... All I can do is relay what he's telling me." But he kept us so well-informed. Your team performed amazingly. People came from other states, other regions, other areas. You know, Mark took over a huge role when he took the role of Keith Hunting. We all know Keith Hunting and what a job, a marvelous job Keith Hunting did. Well, Mark has stepped right into those shoes and has taken off. We have not lost a step, and we're so fortunate to have someone like Mark involved in SWEPCO and with the City of Longview. I can't say thank you enough. Since the day he got here, he has been in constant communication with me in every situation that needed to be taken care of. And I have ultimate respect for you, for your men, for the people that are out there, the women. You all were amazing, and you made this tragic event into something that we could all get our hands around, and the healing continues. But you all, you just, I can't say enough how much we appreciate what you guys did. Y'all are just fantastic. Thank you, my friend. I appreciate you more than you know. Weren't those two fun community recognitions tonight? Loved both of those. We are now to citizen comment. My first speaker card is Tim Edwards.
Hello. My name is Tim Edwards. I reside at 217 Hampton Court, just south of the mall, and am recently retired. I just wanted the opportunity to come and give a compliment. I wanted to thank everybody in the city and in SWEPCO, but that's probably not possible. But in the disaster we had two weeks and one day ago, there was indeed a lot of suffering. But the thing that impressed me, I was never more proud of our city and of the people here in the ways that y'all responded. SWEPCO, of course, but also the city employees, the first responders, the firefighters, the police, and they did above and beyond the call of duty. It was really impressive. Day after day, they were doing their job and then some helping everywhere and every way they could. One of the most touching moments was less than an hour after the storm had gone by, the first responders were coming into our neighborhood checking on shut-ins to be sure they were okay. That says a lot about the quality of our community. And again, thanks to all of our city employees, SWEPCO, to all of you. This is a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you very much. It's okay to clap. Okay, our next speaker card is Ann Jackson.
Sorry for being so casual. I thought I was going to have time to change, but I was still up at the courthouse and between bouncing between them and law enforcement trying to get some people arrested. First of all, I would love to compliment a couple of things. Not a lot of people know me very well. I'm in my 40s. Most people think 50s, 60s because of all my grass. I know, it's really just blonde, but it's not. What I am is my BS degree is a EMS coordinator, and I furthered in safety beyond that. So I'm big into rescue, helping people out, things like that. And with Longview, thank you guys so much because what I saw and what a lot of people don't realize is that you guys were getting gas people, electric. You had water. You had people working on limbs. You guys had stuff going in pretty quick, and I was really impressed. The City Send, I tell so many people about. If you have a problem, use the City Send. It works. I don't know why a lot of people won't call in. I think they're just afraid. They have to leave a name. They have to leave a contact number. I'm like, folks, they're going to ask you, but you don't have to. You're not required to leave that. So a lot of times, I will see something and I will call it in, and within a really reasonable short amount of time, it's, someone's out there looking at it or repairing it. Water coming out of the road, potholes, things like that, and it's really been very, very Where I have an issue and would love to make it a goal of law enforcement, of the city to work on, is I live at 1518 North Seventh Street. It's a small apartment complex owned by Jerry McCafferty and managed by David Keyes, and they have a maintenance person named Busby Jones that does basic maintenance. There's been a lot of domestic violence. There's been threats, including death threats. There's mold out there, and I'm not just saying there's mold because of a smell. I've had it professionally tested. Some of them have been extremely high levels. There's a lot of drugs, and I know that for a fact because they've invited me to their parties and things like that, or to do witchcraft and Ouija boards, and I'm like, "I'm sorry. I'm just not into this." There's been a lot of fights. There's been a fire. There have been, there's a sex offender who did something very, very offensive to me, which I will not state at this time. I would love to work on some of these conditions. I've had the city come out and do a lot of inspections. Sometimes I've had to have them come back out because I'm like, "Look, you said all tarps have to be off. This one's still over mine." I ended up having five leaks before the next inspection. I had a bed ruined. I had a bunch of other stuff ruined. Nothing repaired. I know that's my time. I will be coming back. I'm going to stay in front of you, please, not to be a jerk, to keep you aware that these things are going on, and you will see how severe it gets because I've been attacked and I've been the one who's had injuries because they want me to shut up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. We're now to presentation items. I have two presentations to make today. First will be National Emergency Medical Services Week. So come on up. Come on up, gang. Emergency Medical Services Week, May 19 to the 25th, 2019. Whereas the Longview Fire Department has requested by the mayor by proclamation recognize May 19 to the 25th, 2019 as Emergency Medical Services Week in City of Longview. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service system, and the members provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. This year's theme is EMS Strong, Beyond the Call, and I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. So therefore, I, Mayor Matt, with the power of this to me, as mayor of City of Longview, proclaim May 19 to the 25th as Emergency Medical Services Week in Longview. Okay, this is to you. Congratulations. We celebrate a week of this, but this is 24/7/365. This never stops. You all never stop. The emergencies never stop, and so your commitment to that is, it is what it is. And we can never say thank you enough for that, but know that we recognize you every day, but we take this week to say a special thanks for all the hard work, all the long hours, all the calls that you answer. When you want to go home and you can't because something come up, you don't get a chance to go home and do that shower or eat that meal, you have to go to work. And we appreciate that commitment because without you guys, Longview would not be what it is. You're just part of that public safety system that makes us the best in the state. So I thank you all so much for your commitment, thanks for what you do. Keep it up. Appreciate you very much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Y'all are awesome. Thank you so much. Come on. Come on. All the best. Thank you all so, so much. Next, we have the Stop the Bleed Day. Who's going to take this one? I was going to say, where y'all going? Okay, come on back up. So Stop the Bleed Day, May 23, 2019. Longview Fire Department requests the mayor by proclamation recognize May 23 as a second annual Stop the Bleed Day in Longview. Whereas Stop the Bleed Training provides the public with information and education through local fire, EMS, and healthcare professionals, the Longview Fire Department has requested the mayor by proclamation recognize May 22 to 26 Emergency Medical Services Week, but today is May 23, Stop the Bleed Day. So free bleed control basic classes are offered to the public, furthering the goal of the American College of Surgeons to train everyone in the U.S. about what to do during a bleeding emergency. Therefore, I, Mayor Matt, with authority vested in me, as mayor of City of Longview, proclaim May 23 as Stop the Bleed Day in Longview. Now, okay, thank you. Congratulations. Okay. This is something different and significant. We started this two years ago. I know you do so many classes, chief, on education. And let me just tell you this. In an emergency where bleeding is ongoing, you don't have much time. And if you don't have an idea of what you're doing and how to do it, that person's not going to have a very good outcome, and the statistical chance of that goes down by the second. And so this is so important that we're educating... Y'all are educating everybody, schools, businesses, people that would normally not know how to handle this type of emergency, at least have an idea, and that gives someone a chance because I know what, I know how important bleeding is. And until you've ever seen it or watched it, you don't really understand how quick people can have an emergency in this situation. Without someone there, it's like CPR. You've got four minutes. If you're not there in four minutes, their chance of survival and a brain injury just diminishes exponentially. The same thing with this. You don't have a lot of time when someone has a significant bleed. So the more education we have in our community, the more people that understand what to do and how to do it, it saves a life. And if you save one life ever, it's worth all the hours, the thousands of hours that you spend training people. So please keep that up. Don't get discouraged. Keep it going. Let the citizens understand, and this just makes a huge difference. This makes Longview a better, safer place to live. Thank you all. Keep it up. Appreciate y'all. Come on, same picture. Do it again. Y'all, the best. Thank you all so much. Thank you, ma'am. I really don't know how many other communities do that, but I know this, we do it, and that's what's important. And I think it's such an innovative thing that we have taken this upon ourselves. And chief, thank you for promoting this because I do think that, you know, 20 years ago, no one had ever heard of an AED. Now they're on every corner and every business around. And this is the same type of thing. This trend will go forward because this is something that saves lives. Things that save lives are important, and we need to keep doing that thing, and no matter how much it, how time-consuming it is, it's important that we continue to move that process, that educational experience forward. So thank you, chief. Thanks for what y'all are doing. I believe we're to public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Matt, council members, Mr. Bonds, good evening. Last night, we had the opportunity to celebrate National Police Week. During that week, every year gives us an opportunity to do two things. One, recognize our employees through an awards banquet, and two, remember those officers that were killed in the line of duty serving our city and our county. I'd like to take just a minute and recognize our employees that we were able to recognize for the various awards that they received during our annual banquet. Our Civilian of the Year was Kathy Veeth. She serves with the administration as an office manager. Our Telecommunications Operator of the Year was Becky Lanier. Our Officer of the Year was Matthew Cooper. Our Rookie of the Year was Matthew Prescott. The Detective of the Year was Susie Hardy. And our Telecommunication Supervisor of the Year was Randy Ross. And our Supervisor of the Year was Detective Shannon Purdon. And I want to congratulate them. All of these awards that these individuals received, they were nominated by their peers and then selected by their peers for these various awards within the department. So want to congratulate them on the fine job that they did this year. Also, during the week of National Police Week, we've had several organizations throughout the city reach out to us and provide meals and bring things down for the officers. I want to thank them for doing that. Want to thank East Texas Professional Credit Union. They came down one day, cooked lunch for the Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and DPS here in town, and also made a donation to the Centurion Club, which is the nonprofit organization that funds our annual awards banquet and memorial service. I want to thank them for what they did. Also, I'd like to thank the Greckton Rotary Club. Always around this time of the year, they sponsor a meal for the police and fire. I want to thank them for what they did. The meal is usually at the end of the night, but before the meal, we all know that we have the golf tournament that takes place where the police and the fire face off in the golf tournament. And tonight, I can report to you, mayor, that the Police Department retained the trophy again this year. So after 12, after that 12-year dry run, we were able to keep it. I won't tell you about how much, but we were able to keep it. Also, some good news for one of our officers, but probably some sad news for our department. Officer Mike Grusham has announced his retirement with the Police Department after 35 years of service, and we'll be having a retirement reception for Officer Mike at 2:00 PM Friday, May 31, in the municipal courtroom. And I know Mike has served the city well for 35 years. I know he's excited about his next chapter in life and in his career, and we'll hold that for the retirement reception, but want to congratulate him on his 35 years of service. And also, we'll be having a Police Explorer Academy, June 3 through the 7. Longview Police Department Explorer Academy. Any youth age 14 through 19 that are interested to learn more about law enforcement and some of the things that we do in this profession, I'd ask them to sign up and come spend a week with us and learn a little bit more about what we do. They can obtain an application at longviewtexas.gov/exploreracademy for those that are interested. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir.
I didn't bring the trophy tonight. It was too big.
It's too big. Bulky. Come on, Chief Stillman. Our Officer of the Year was Matthew Cooper. Our Rookie of the Year was Matthew Prescott. The Detective of the Year was Susie Hardy. And our Telecommunication Supervisor of the Year was Randy Ross. And our Supervisor of the Year was Detective Shannon Purdon. And I want to congratulate them. All of these awards that these individuals received, they were nominated by their peers and then selected by their peers for these various awards within the department. So, want to congratulate them on the fine job that they did this year. Also, during the week of National Police Week, we've had several organizations throughout the city reach out to us and provide meals and bring things down for the officers. I want to thank them for doing that. Want to thank East Texas Professional Credit Union. They came down one day, cooked lunch for the police department, the sheriff's department, and DPS here in town. And also made a donation to the Centurion Club, which is the nonprofit organization that funds our annual awards banquet and memorial service. I want to thank them for what they did. Also, I'd like to thank the Greckton Rotary Club. Always around this time of the year, they sponsor a meal for the police and fire. I want to thank them for what they did. The meal is usually at the end of the night, but before the meal, we all know that we have the golf tournament that takes place where the police and the fire face off in the golf tournament. And tonight, I can report to you, Mayor, that the police department retained the trophy again this year. So after 12, after the 12-year dry run, we were able to keep it. I won't tell you about how much, but we were able to keep it. Also, some good news for one of our officers, but probably some sad news for our department. Officer Mike Grusham has announced his retirement with the police department after 35 years of service. And we'll be having a retirement reception for Officer Mike at 2:00 PM Friday, May 31st, in the municipal courtroom. And I know Mike has served the city well for 35 years. I know he's excited about his next chapter in life and in his career. And we'll hold that for the retirement reception. But want to congratulate him on his 35 years of service. And also, we'll be having a Police Explorer Academy, June 3rd through the 7th. Longview Police Department Explorer Academy. Any youth age 14 through 19 that are interested to learn more about law enforcement and some of the things that we do in this profession, I'd ask them to sign up and come spend a week with us and learn a little bit more about what we do. They can obtain an application at longviewtexas.gov/exploreracademy for those that are interested. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Bishop? Thank you, sir.
I didn't bring the trophy tonight. It was too big.
It's too big. Bulky. Come on, Chief Stillman.
Mayor Matt, members of council, Mr. Bonds, thanks for the opportunity to share with you a few things that have been happening in the fire department since we last met. I wanted to go back and grab this one. I didn't get to do the last presentation because I was knee-deep in damage assessment right after the storm. But I wanted to go back and thank Pine Tree Birch Elementary for allowing me to participate with their readathon. Got to read three Franklin books. The kids forgave my Gilmer accent, and we all got along just fine. It was a good time. So, a big thanks to them. Our weather event, we are still in the recovery phase of that. We will continue in that for likely another month, maybe a month and a half. We're still, Public Works is doing an awesome job of getting as much of the debris out of the field as they can. We've done our damage assessment. We've had our state partners and our federal partners in here looking with us and checking our math on all of our numbers. And there's work in the pipeline right now to see what level of assistance, if any, will be approved for. So hopefully, we'll know that within another week, maybe two, but it's certainly being worked. I want to back up and say something on this. It never ceases to amaze me, the different rounds of damage assessment that we are out doing. This puts us out in the neighborhoods, going house to house, door to door, talking to people, collecting information, collecting photos and data. And it was amazing to see how many neighborhoods pull together. You'll have one house on one street damaged, and there will be four or five different families out doing work, cleaning up, getting things off the roof. It's just really about neighbor helping neighbor. And that really grabs a hold of you when you see that in action. So, the people that didn't get hit are thankful, and they realize it could be them next time, so they're out there paying it forward, helping their neighbors get out of a bind. And it's just amazing to see that. And it happens every time we have an event like this. The Fire Department, too, held its annual awards banquet. We did it back on May the 11th, and we recognized seven of our employees for the great work that they did to move the fire department forward over the course of the last year. And I'd like to publicly recognize and congratulate. Our Firefighter of the Year was Drew Pfeifer. Paramedic of the Year, Brandon Ayers. Our Officer of the Year was Jeff Walling. Our Rookie of the Year was Jason Frye. Fire Chiefs Award went to Ms. Bianca Cummings. The Sue Rogers Award to Joshua Minick. And the Brotherhood Award to David Hawley. And I want to give a shout out to our sponsors real quick. The Longview Professional Firefighters Association, Longview Regional Medical Center, Leading Edge Medical Associates, and Hospitality Health ER. They're the ones that made this event possible, and we couldn't have done it without their support. EMS Signing Day at Longview High School. This is a pretty cool thing. We started this program in collaboration with Kilgore College and Longview High School about two years ago, where these kids in the occupational curriculum at Longview High School can essentially earn their EMT certification while they're finishing up their junior and senior year. And these, this group of eight students, they have completed all their coursework. The next step in their lives is to do their clinical rotations, which they're going to do with the Longview Fire Department over the course of the summer. Hopefully, by the end of the summer, they'll be able to take their state test to get their EMT basic certification and continue moving forward from there, eventually, hopefully, become paramedics, which makes them viable candidates to come to work for the Longview Fire Department. So, we love being a part of this, seeing these local kids maybe stay local and get into a great career working for the city of Longview and giving back to the community. So, I'm very excited about where this program is headed. Yeah, the golf, and I'll tell you, it was one stinking little stroke that they beat us by. But, you know, that's the way it goes. It was probably my fault. That was probably my shot that I missed, and I'll take that one on the chin. But again, great sponsors make this happen. Certainly Raider Funeral Home, Haz RV, Yow Builders, Spring Hill State Bin, Baines Air Conditioning, Longview Glass, and RLM General Contractors. But the Longview Greckton Rotary Club, first and foremost, they've been doing this for, I don't know, Keith, 30-plus years. And it's always a great time, good fellowship, and we just appreciate them thinking of us and allowing us to be a part of this. We'll get it back next year. EMS Appreciation Week, may you recognize proclamation, again, great community sponsors, and they really stepped up this week. The Firefighters Association provided breakfast on Tuesday, Hospitality Health on, breakfast on, I'm sorry. It was Tuesday, Wednesday, that should be Wednesday on the second one. And then lunch today was sponsored by Longview Regional. And again, we just appreciate them recognizing what we do and supporting our crews the way that they've done. Well, Elementary, they had a little event, the Sparky got to go to, and he wanted me to give a shout out to the kids there. He had a great time participating with that. This was a celebration of the students' completion of a tutoring program there. So, we love being involved in the schools and getting to send our message and share our message out with all the kids at these different campuses. The Globe Scholar Career Day, we got to talk to 600 graduating students from those four different schools, Longview, Pine Tree, Halswell, and Gilmer, to share with them, hey, this might be a career option for you coming to work for the Longview Fire Department. So again, we want to try as hard as we can to keep these local kids local and get them back into the community after they finish their next level of education, whatever that may be. You mentioned Stop the Bleed. These classes are available. Anybody can contact Chief Dodge, and if you're a business or a church group, 239-5531, and she will be happy to accommodate whatever you may request as far as time a day. We've done them at 6:00 in the morning, and we've done them at 6:00 at night. So, it doesn't matter. We'll come to you to get this message out there on the street. Our hot camps are filling up. There's still time to sign up for either the junior hot camp or the senior, or the regular senior hot camp. That registration will shut down next Friday, May the 31st. There's still spots available, so if you're interested in spending a fun day in the summertime, please look into that. Code Red, Mayor, we talked about it. We're going to keep talking about it. Code Red is a system, a service that the city provides. I'm really pushing this out because it travels with you, but it makes sure that you get those timely notifications, all hours of the night or day, to know what's going on, to help you protect yourself, and it might save your life. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief? Thank you, Chief Stillman. Thank you, guys, for all the work y'all have done the last couple of weeks. Y'all are still out there every day. I appreciate you very much. We have two discussion items real quickly. First one is our discussion about the Walk of Stars. We have a little presentation I'm going to present to you all, but basically, what I want to do, council, is look into this in a very positive manner. I think this is an opportunity for us as a community to stand out and make something happen that we can really be proud of, that we can showcase people that have come before us, people that are out doing great things, and bring pride, and bring excitement, bring tourists to our community. And I think if we do that, I think we'll have a lot of fun at it. And you know, I've received so many, many, many positive messages on this little idea. And I'm glad for that. There's always going to be some negative, always, no matter what you do. If we said today's Thursday, there's going to be someone to say it's not. So, and that's okay. And I understand that. But the majority of the negativity has been about cost. And I want to, I want to just talk about that for a second, because I don't see this as being something that's going to cost the citizens of Longview anything. This is something that we're going to form a committee. We'll have criteria. We'll have funding mechanisms in place, just like we do for 100 Eggs of Heritage. Sean, you want to go through this real quick? And let's just dissect this out, gang, and see if y'all are on the same page that I am.
So, just a really quick kind of overview. What we did was we took a look at some of the other communities that have done some similar things. So, we thought we wanted to kind of give you guys some things to think about. So, obviously, the biggest thing is where do you want to put it, downtown or elsewhere? And then for criteria, how does this work? As we looked around, a lot of different ways that they've done this. Obviously, funding. We've seen everything from purely public to purely private, some mix. And then ultimately, how do you want that oversight committee to function? Would that be a city committee, or a completely nonprofit, or some partnership therein? And so, just to look at a couple of different things. This is Downtown Live a few weeks ago. We just had a drone shot there, because you had mentioned the idea, maybe around Heritage Plaza. One of the ideas that Keith Bonds had, which is a really good one, is thinking about not necessarily inside Heritage Plaza, but around the area, all the way around, there are these brick-inlaid pavers that go along the sidewalk, not just there, but all over downtown. There's probably somewhere close to 300 of them all over downtown. So, it already kind of has a bit of a walkway. So, they look like this. Some of them have benches on them. Some of them are without benches, some shorter than others, but you can see that's kind of what they look like. We're all probably most familiar with the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Theirs is administered by their Chamber of Commerce. Theirs is unique in that it costs you $40,000 to get your star. If you'd like to do that here, I'm sure we could put in a really nice star for $40,000. Other places, maybe more similar to what we could look at. St. Louis, theirs is a completely nonprofit organization just for this purpose alone. They have a criteria that, and this is very similar to what you'll see in other places, is you need to have a direct connection to the town, and then they wanted you to have a national impact on cultural heritage. So, you needed to have a big impact. So, you can see the star there being Tina Turner. They have a lot of stars that have that connection. One unique thing about them as well, anybody can submit a nomination. They get about 30 to 40 finalists per year, and they do it like a balloting system. So, they have 120-member diverse committee from throughout, and they send them a ballot of those finalists. They vote, and then the top ones get the stars for that year. So, that's how they do it, to try to have a diverse community input. Denton, a little closer by, their system is actually very similar to what we would be talking about, where you've got some brick pavers, and then it's a plaque inset in there. That picture doesn't show the plaque very well, but you can see how it sets in there. Theirs is operated through the city, but their downtown Main Street program has now started fundraising for it and may take over the operation of it in the future as well. Their criteria, you can see there, it's that connection to Denton plus a national impact, and then they have some other considerations as well. Waksahatchee, theirs is run through their festival, very similar kind of thing, but theirs is strictly on the entertainment side of things. And then very close to us, the Tyler Half Mile of History, theirs is through their City Historical Preservation Board. Their criteria, as you can see, it's you've got to have a connection to Tyler or Smith County. But theirs is much broader of who could be included. They have a lot of categories, but they have a restriction that it has to be a deceased person. So, it is just the historical. And several other places did things like that, too, just like we have our street naming. If you want to be named for a street, it's only after you've passed. So, anyway, but theirs, interestingly, it has to be 25 years ago that the history happened. So, all that to say, all of these have happened very differently in each place, whether it's a city, or chamber, or a nonprofit, or some mix. And then their funding, all different as well. So, lots of choices to go there, and there's a little background.
Well, I think that's, I appreciate that, Sean, just to give us an idea of what we can do and how we might do things. But I just think that it would be something that we could make our own and form it the way we want to and make something out of this where, because I got to thinking about some of the people that have come from Longview. And I've had people already start sending me names and saying, did you know they were from Longview? And I go, I had no idea. I didn't know this. I didn't know that. And I think that's important, that we don't forget about our history, because people who have done something significant, have moved away, maybe 20 years ago, well, we tend to not remember that. But it's a fun way to make that where it's a long-lasting memory that we can all look to, and our kids as well, and our grandkids. Because if you lose history, you don't get it back. And so, I think that's something that I would like to see take place. If you all are in favor of it, we will bring it before you as an action item. If you're not in favor of it, then I would love to know your thoughts and concerns. But I do want the citizens of Longview to realize, this is not going to be a taxable burden upon the community, just like Heritage Plaza is not. We have found ways to raise money and do things in business. I think we'll get behind this. I know, I've already had people say, I'll pay whatever it takes if so-and-so were to receive a star, you know, or whatever we decide to make it. You know, I know that if my father were to get a star, I would, there's no issue of who wouldn't fund that, you know? But it's not, I don't want this to be about funding. I want this to be about pride and community pride, and taking an ownership in people that have come before us, people that have had significant impacts, and not just entertainment. I'm talking about, I mean, there's obviously athletics. We've had some great athletes come through Longview. Entertainment, arts, history, culture, education, business, politics. We've had a lot of people that make up our community that have been born and raised here and have moved on, and I think that's something we can embrace. So, that's my thought. That's my intent, and I'd love to know your ideas on it.
I want to make a comment, and then I have a question. I think the timing is really good to talk about it with the Sesquicentennial Ball. And I know that in preparations for that, you know, there's a list of people that have moved away from Longview that we are hoping that will come back and participate in that. So, I think that's a good, very timely view. And then I guess my question to you is, is your vision more like the first couple where, you know, they had roots in the community and then went and did national things? Or it looked like Tyler was more Tyler-impact, local?
Here's my thought. I think every category will have its own definition. I think, you know, in an entertainment industry, I mean, I think you want someone to make a national splash. But I think in the history category, you know, I mean, Carl Essis is never going to show up anywhere except Longview, Texas, but my goodness is he had an impact on Longview, Texas, you know? Archie Luterno is nationally well-known throughout the world, but he's from, you know, his impact was in Longview. I'm just saying, people like that aren't going to have the national pop, but they've got a huge local pop. And I think we should need, I would want to consider things like that. I don't think it has to be a national thing. As long as it's significant for Longview, that's all that really matters. A significance in this community to have made a difference, those that have come, because I want this to be something that people will say, well, I can make a difference, too. It doesn't have, you don't have to be an Oscar-winning actor to have made a difference in Longview. But you can make that difference, and I'd like to see us include multiple areas in that. I don't think it has to be national. But I think if they've made a national contribution, it certainly helps their chances of getting a star here. But that's just a thought. But I want a committee to determine this. It's not going to be mine. I want a committee to make recommendations and bring it before us, and we'll help out in guiding that committee. But I just think we need to be broad in our thinking. We need to think big and not think insignificant thoughts, big thoughts. Are there comments?
I hope you wouldn't have to be dead to be.
No, absolutely not. Because I think the big part of this is to have the person show up. When you dedicate the plaque or the star to them, that's part of the fun of this, is to bring people here and have them present. You know, they can, you know, put their footprint or handprint, or however we do this, you know, whatever we do, those that are still alive, I think, need to participate in this endeavor. And I think that's going to be a huge part of the fun and the promotion of this whole process. Because I don't know about y'all, but I think if people knew that X big star was coming to Longview, people would want to come and see that happen, unveiling of the star for so-and-so, you know?
Yeah. But I would also think, David, no pun intended, that there may be some that are recommended that may have, you know, had a footprint in Longview that may have, may be deceased.
Absolutely. I think it's got to go both ways.
I know it's a little morbid.
Yes, absolutely. I think our criteria needs to be the impact, not whether they're alive or dead. I think the impact is what we're looking for, because there are so many people that have made up the heritage of this community, just like we've seen Mr. Methan's, you know, picture on our T-shirts, you know? Obviously, he's not still with us, but they've made significant impacts in this community. And that's where I want to see this happen, is I want it to be the history of Longview and past, present, and future, all the way around. And I think that's where we, that's where I would like to see it go. And I hope the committee will evaluate this and come up with some really specific criteria. And then, because I think each category will have its own set of criteria. It won't be across the board for everything, because the categories can be too different, too dissimilar.
Can I make another comment before you move on?
Yes.
I, well, I just wanted to provide a little feedback on this. I think downtown's very important. If we're going to do it, it has to be downtown. I do also think, obviously, the funding should be private 100%, and that the oversight and requirements needs to be not a nonprofit, but needs to be city. And there can be some mix in there, because I assume, you know, Main Street would be involved in some capacity.
Absolutely.
But I do think it's a really fun, positive, unique idea. And I was able to go on the chamber trip last week, and every time I go on one of those, what I'm excited about is the way that they're marketing their community. So, I think exactly like you just said, Andy, this is a positive way to market our community, bring people in, talk about Longview, about the wonderful people that we have here now, that we've had here before and helped raise. So, I think it's a great, positive marketing opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Moore.
What are your thoughts on where we go from here to form the committee?
Well, if, you know, discussing it tonight, I think next council meeting, we will come back with an action item to form the committee. And then, at that point, I would like, as I asked you all before, input from each one of you all for specific nominations to a committee that we will determine the size and the scope, and then send them on their charge. Because I think there's, you know, there are people that are going to know everything about every sports person that ever came from Longview and what they did. There are people that know every entertainer. People that know all about the history. But that one person can know everything about all the different categories. So, we're going to have to have specific categories and specific people in those categories. And I think that's going to be part of the fun, too, because people are already calling me, saying, I know so much about this part of Longview, you know? And I think that's where we go. So, if we agree upon it at our next meeting, then we'll start bringing names forward and get this thing rolling. Because time is of the essence. I would like to, my plan would be to unveil our first nominees or our first stars on the to, my plan would be to unveil our first nominees or our first stars on the 22nd of February at our Sesquicentennial Celebration for Longview and have that ready to go downtown and, and make that a huge celebration in coordination with all the other things that are going on with the community that day and that, that weekend. And, and I, hopefully, this will, this will move forward because I've already talked to a couple of people that are going to plan on being here, I hope, because I think they'll be very important stars for our community to start with. So, you have a discussion. Thank you all for indulging me. Appreciate that. Okay. Now, our census committee. Ms. Laura.
Good evening. It's time to prepare for the 2020 census and the Census Bureau calls it a complete count committee that we need you to form, please, to help us overcome the citizens that are not counted. These are some of the categories you might consider as you are getting your names together. We try to reach every segment of the community to convince them, to convince everyone that it's important to be counted on April 1st, 2020, which is Census Day. These are just some facts. This is required by the Constitution. It provides the apportionment among the states. So I think the last in 2010, Texas got some additional representatives. It provides for redistricting with y'all. In Texas, we receive forty, over $43 billion that's apportioned according to census. And that works out to $1,578 per person. And if we do not count everybody, we lose that funding for the state, which impacts our schools, impacts city operations, impacts transportation planning. So we are asking you to please give us a committee that can help us motivate the community to participate in the process. And the census has, will have provision for this census first time ever to complete your information online. So that's a huge step forward. Any questions? Try to be brief.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. So, counsel, I had Ms. Laura give us this background so that you all would understand what I'm looking for because I think this census committee is going to be very important. I think it's going to make a huge difference in, in our count. And I think our count is going to make a huge difference in, in the, the way people view our community. And so I would like us to be very cognizant of that, very serious about it, and try to come up with a, a list of names from each council member on who we might want to put on this committee because I think it's going to be of ultimate importance come January. So, and once again, time is of the essence. We need to get this thing rolling and start working on this immediately. So at our next meeting, I will bring this forward again as a action item to ask you all to approve this and we will start getting our names ready and get this committee with a charge and moving forward.
How many people are you looking for?
You know, I, I think I'm not going to put a limit on it. What I want you to do is bring me some good names. And if, if one person has three and one person has five and they're all good names, we'll take them all. Because this is not going to be an easy task. To be able to encourage and get this word out, it's going to take a, a significant number of people to do that. I plan on bringing five or six names myself. And I hope you all will, will do the same. I think this needs to be a broad-based committee that has a big charge and a, and it's going to be a big job. And, and so I hope you'll think about this, put some good thought into it, and bring people that are willing to get out there and work. This is, this is kind of like, for all of y'all that have gone through elections, this is kind of like the people that you get to go knocking on doors for you. It, it's no fun, but it's necessary in, in an election. And this is kind of like an election. We need people that are willing to go out there and knock on doors and get people encouraged to be counted because I think every citizen needs to be counted. So don't limit yourself. If, if we get too big, we can always cut it back. I don't think we're going to get too big. I think we're going to, we're going to need all the manpower we can, we can get on this, on this committee.
Can you go back to the slide that Laura had? Not that one, that one. Committee members are experts in.
Mm-hmm. And we'll get you, we'll get all of you all this, this information because I think each one of these categories are important. Because there are going to be segments that I think in every census get missed. And they get missed big. And, and especially like apartment complexes, those are the places that, you know, people just don't get involved in it. But we need to be involved in that because those are a ton of people live in those apartment complexes and we don't get, we don't get them counted. And that's, you count how many apartment complexes we have in Longview and how many people live in those apartments and it's, it changes our number exponentially. So that's, that's a huge area that we lose every, every time we have a census. So things like that, be thinking about along those lines and, you know, nursing homes, places where people live in groups are places we need to be counting, along with every other house in town. But it's those groups that we miss. So think about that. That's right.
Is it, Laura, can you explain what the responsibilities of the committee are going to be? So when I ask somebody to be on it, I can tell them exactly what they're going to be doing?
We're going to meet and we're going to discuss marketing strategies, outreach, how to use social media to get the word out. As the mayor said, getting into the churches because a lot of people may only go to their church. Getting the schools, if we get the kids interested in it, maybe they'll go home and make sure their parents. So it, it's really about marketing and outreach and communication.
So the committee's going to determine how to market it, market the census?
How to reach every person in Longview so we make sure everyone's counted. And it's all about outreach, marketing, communication.
I've talked to a
I was going to ask, the names that we submit, will they form the committee? Are they the people who are actually going out into?
I think they'll be the committee that forms the committee.
Okay, okay.
They'll be, they'll be the oversight committee. And I think they'll each one, it'll be like fingerlings, you know.
Okay.
To get the ripple in the pond until the stone ends. So we want to get as many people that we can to get as many people as they can to go out and inform these, these, these organizations, get out and, and spread the word.
I've talked to a couple in my district already and they're enthusiastic about undertaking this. And I have a number of Hispanics in my district. It's going to be very important. And I've asked them to try to contact the Hispanic community to get some of those.
Every segment needs to be counted, every segment. And I think it's important that we look at our districts and the demographics of our districts and find out how we, what it takes, because every district's going to be different, what's going to take to reach the people in my district. Focus on that and people that can do that in your district, I think will, will have a really good response. So thank you all for indulging this again. We're now at consent agenda. Are there any items, people like to take it off for a specific, we're not going to, we're going to remove item D. Other than D, any items like to be removed for separate discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Consent agenda.
Is there a motion?
I did.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Zoning public hearing will be held to consider proposal, proposed annexation of approximately 7.307 acres in the ETJ. Ms. Joy?
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Bonds. This is the second of two required public hearings that must be held prior to final action of this annexation request on June 13th, 2019. Staff did receive a quest from property owners, which is Scott and Renee Hamilton, as well as Four Corners Development, to annex approximately 7.307 acres of land situated in our ETJ located in Harrison County. As stated previously, this is the second of two public hearings that's required by state law. As part of this, as part of this annexation, a service plan has been prepared and is part of your packet. All basic services such as sanitation, police, EMS, and fire will be provided at the date of annexation. No roadways will be included as part of this annexation request. Currently, this property is outside of the Longview CCN boundary area and within Gum Springs Water Supply Corporation. Gum Springs Board did vote to release this area to the city of Longview due to their inability to provide a fire protection for this proposed development. The vote was unanimous and the minutes are as part of this service plan that is presented. A water main will be extended to this site for approximate cost of $123,000. Wastewater is available to the site, but will also need to be extended for approximately $106,000. Both will be installed at the expense of the developer. Also, the developer will amend the CCN boundaries through the PUC and will bear the cost of the boundary amendment. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any comments? Public hearing's now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing held to consider resolution nominating Joy Global to offer the governor's economic development tourism through the Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project. Mr. Shirley?
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds. Public hearings will be held to consider resolution nominating Joy Global Longview Operations LLC, a subsidiary of Kamatsu Mining Corp. to the Office of Governor of Economic Development Tourism through the Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project. The proposed qualified business site is located at 2400 South MacArthur Street, Longview, which lies in an enterprise zone. Tax and other potential incentives to be offered to the project within the city of Longview jurisdiction and under the auspices of the Texas Enterprise Zone Program administered by the Office of the Governor of Texas will be discussed at the hearing. As many of you may remember, last year, we recommended a similar project to this program, being Longview Regional. The Texas Enterprise Zone Program is a state sales and use tax refund program that is designed to encourage private investment and job creation and retention in economically distressed areas of the state. And that's what those enterprise zones are determined through the census process every 10 years. And those are the low-income census tracts. And so companies that are approved for the enterprise zone designation are eligible to apply for the refund of the state sales and use tax that they've paid during the designation period for qualified expenditures up to the maximum allowable based on the level of capital investment, the number of qualified jobs and such. In this particular project, there's multi-phases that they're going to be going through with renovations and new construction. In total, it's about 110.7 million in new construction, 18 million in existing building renovations, and 17 million in new machinery and equipment. So it's a very substantial investment that they're going to be doing over a number of years. It's in a key part of our community, a key community partner, as was mentioned earlier with Mr. Laterno and the, and the historical significance of that area. You know, this, this is very important to the community. It doesn't cost the city anything. That's the key word. It's, it's the state portion of the sales and use tax that they'd be getting a refund. And so we do ask that y'all recommend this project for enterprise zone designation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Shirley? This does require public hearing.
Yes.
Which is now open. Any questions or comments from Mr. Shirley? Public hearing's now closed. Do we take a motion? Do we take an action item on this?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This is a good thing. Thank you, Michael, for bringing this forward. This is a good thing for Longview. Certain ordinance approved the city manager's recommendation regarding the creation of a director of information service position. Mr. Bonds?
Thank you, counsel, for your support and for allowing me to present this proposal to create an information technology department. As I was thinking about how to describe this, I had to think about what information technology meant to us. And I don't know if you know a definition, but the definition that I found is pretty simple. It says that information technology is the use of computer and telecommunications systems for storing, retrieving, and sending information. I can't think of a more common or important or critical component of any of our operations with the city. And the ever-increasing dependence that all of our departments have on these few employees has gotten to the point that I, I feel like they need to have independence and autonomy. And not that they're being held back by Department of Administration where they are now, but having this peer-to-peer relationship, if will, with other department is going to mean a lot to these guys. Many years ago, when I began my career, I'm going to date myself, I worked for a city that had one computer and it was in finance. And so as a young engineer, they allowed me to have a computer. So I was the second employee with a computer and I became the IT department and I wasn't very, very good at that. So I understood the need for these people. They're not, they're more than just the, the desktop computer repairman that, that most people think of as they have. Information is on every police vehicle, every fire department vehicle. It's, we all carry them around in our hands and in our pockets. And it's our hope that this department will do more than reach out to the departments that they've recently interacted, more importantly, with the library, plant automation technology, and the traffic signal department. These folks is my hope to, well, help with the important technological features of the new police department as well. So some may question, well, I think the role of government is to be smaller and to consolidate services. And that may be true. Many years ago, the utility department here and the public works department consolidated. But at the same time, a few years ago, we took parks out from community services and made its own department. I think it's been very successful. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I have Justin Kier here as our manager of the information and technology division, which I hope he'll be a director of information. So if you have any questions.
Well, Mr. Bonds and I have discussed this item at length. And, and my thoughts on it were very simple. Technology is only expanding. It's never going to go backwards. It's only going forward. It'll never be less than what it was today. It'll only be greater than it was yesterday. And so with that expansion and the knowledge and the abilities that we have, we need to make it where we're optimizing what we do. And even though this is just basically a reorganization, it's not really expanding government. You're just reorganizing a little bit and making it more efficient for what we do to make it better for every single department. And I think if Mr. Bonds comes to me and says, I need this, I'm going to say, you're the city manager. And if that's what you think you need, then that's what we're going to do. Because this is not something I know about, but I do know that as conservative as Mr. Bonds is, as our city manager, he knows the budget constraints that we, we sit under. He's not going to recommend something that's not absolutely necessary. And so as far as I'm concerned, I, I yield to his desires and I support this fully. Is there any discussion from council?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Bertle?
Are we in trouble on anything right now?
No.
Are we behind or?
No, we've done a terrific job. It's just the expansion of, of these services is causing the need.
If we elevate this position, what's it going to cost us?
I think totally it was $50,000, in that range.
So he's going to have a salary with benefits of $50,000?
No, that's the increase. It would not be just the manager.
Increase in his salary.
His and some other people would move up to managerial positions.
So we're going to have to replace him?
No.
Okay.
I hope not.
We're not. You're not going to, everybody.
This is something I think, Justin is, how long have you worked for the, the city, Justin?
14 years.
14 years, so.
What other towns do we support?
He also provides services to Kilgore.
Okay. Is that hindering us or getting us behind at this point?
Not that I'm aware of, no. That was a pretty good curve at the first. And Justin can speak to this much more than I can, but I think the first year or so, he probably spent some time out there. But I think most of the duties they do with Kilgore now are remotely and he can
Why are we, why are we doing Kilgore stuff?
Justin, do you want to help out? This was, this has been a long time, way before I was in the city manager's office.
Sure, absolutely. So the former city manager for the city of Kilgore came to me and, and we had a good discussion about IT and he asked me to, to help them out. It actually afforded us for two more positions that we desperately needed here at the city. They pay us, yes, sir, quite a bit.
I don't know. I'm just having a problem. We have a lot of chiefs and, and we need more Indians. And we're, we had this at another position in direct to services and we couldn't elevate that. And it was the same amount of money, pretty much. And, and now we're doing which departments? In developmental services. And, you know, we're, we're promoting it. We've got a whole lot of directors here. I mean, every department, we're, we're splitting off. And I don't know, I'm just having a hard issue with this amount of money. And, and what I've seen so far is when this happens, sooner or later, we're going to have to hire somebody to replace that person. When somebody is promoted, somebody takes their spot, exception of one, and that's you. We did not promote an assistant city manager. You know, $50,000 a jump and you're going to raise everybody else up. If we're behind or we need that technology, I would assume we probably need to put the money in there and get rid of Kilgore. You know, that, that's just my outlook on it.
I'm not sure what Kilgore's contract is with us, but Kilgore pays us.
I know they do.
It's about $120,000 on the IT side and another 60 on GIS.
Now, how is this going to affect other departments that already, that we already have IT or computer or?
Yeah. Well, I'll give you an example. Plant automation technology is a four-person group and they are the people that make sure that our water treatment plants and our wastewater treatment plant operate all remotely. It's all automated.
But are we having a problem with any of it now?
They only have four people. And this is, and if one of them retires, which one of them did recently, and then the other one retires, we're down to two, then they depend greatly upon the assistance they can get from IT. So IT has integrated that system. Librature the same way. I think they had an IT person. And when one person is there with one computer, like I did many years ago, there's no problem. But when one person gets in charge of 100, then that's, that
I don't have a problem replacing person for person.
Right.
It's that
Well, it seems, and if you don't mind if I make comment, it seems maybe that that's more efficient to have a hub of the IT people that would service all of the different departments rather than everybody having their own IT department, even though that seems to work fine.
That's exactly right.
But that would seem more efficient and streamlined that
It's a reorganization. It's not adding anybody.
No.
It's a reorganization and getting more, more
But is this going to give access to people that we don't want to have access to certain items in the city?
No, they have the same access. It's the same group of people and they do the same job. They're just going to have more autonomy and more independence. So that if I was in the fire department, I wouldn't think that, well, I have to go to the director. Chief Stillman needed some extra attention. He didn't feel like he had to go to the director of administration to get permission to visit with one of, one of the managers in that department, which is Justin. So I think it's going to require Justin to have more responsibility to, to the other directors because he'll be a peer to them and he'll be more responsible to them.
Who's over it now?
Mary Ann Miller is the director of administration, so.
Has it been running fine?
It, it has. They, they've been, but they're, we've been talking about this for many years and there are struggles, internal struggles occasionally with the, I guess, who should get the, you know, what's fire to put out, if you will, at, at times. So
That's Ms. Miller's decision.
Well, it, that's correct, but
See, this is an organizational change is all this is. This is not adding or subtracting. It's organizational change to make an organization more functional. And it also puts more responsibility on someone. So, with more responsibility, you have to change their job description.
No, I understand that.
Job description changes.
I understand that.
Require, require additional funding. We don't ask someone to do additional jobs without additional funding. And we're asking them to do additional jobs.
We have other divisions in the city that could use the same situation.
Well, but we're not talking about them right now. We're talking about IT.
I know, I know.
And so, we're going to stay on IT because that's what we're talking about today?
Yeah.
And we can bring the other one up at another time, but right now, IT is what's, what's the issue.
Yeah.
And we're not going to compare it to other organizations or other departments. Keith, how many, how many department chairs do we have?
Eight.
Eight. That's what I know. How many employees do we have? 860?
Yes, sir.
Eight for 860 is not an outrageous number for me. Nine for 860 is not an outrageous number for me. That does not concern me, the number of department heads we have, because the department heads are still going to answer to you.
Yes, sir.
And as long as that's the way you feel this works most efficiently.
Yes.
Then that's, I'm not going to sit up here and micromanage my city manager. I'm going to tell you to do what you do, and if we don't like it, then we come to you for it.
Thank you.
But I understand your concern, Steve, but I don't think, we're talking apples and oranges right now. Right now, we're going to talk about this organization that, this expanding technological explosion that happens in our, in our society that we can't keep up with efficiently the way we're operating right now. And this makes us more efficient to operate in that technological environment that we have to operate under, especially when the new police station is formed, and the technology involved with that blows my mind. And it's going to be something we will wrap our arms around, but that's what we have to do.
Yes, sir.
And that's going to need a lot of support. I mean, I really see that as a positive thing for the city to focus on that and being efficient with that. And Justin's department has always done a really great job for me anytime I need something. I think actually the storm maps that y'all made are a really good example of that. Chief Stillman sent that to us, and those are amazing to be able to look at and view where the damage is. I think that across the board at the city is going to be a really great resource to those departments that may not be able to take advantage of it now. So, I really see this as a good step of progress. And, you know, we have limited experience with creating director jobs, but my experience has been, when we split parks out, that's been very positive. We focused on that area. We've had more manpower directed towards it, and we've seen progress there. So, I would expect the same as a result of this.
So, and currently, we have a cell for the fire department, a cell for the police department, a cell for water department. Is that pretty accurate? And all the different, and so now, you're going to group it all under one umbrella?
The fire department right now is, uses them, but the police department, we haven't completely decided to take them out of their silo, if you will. They have a completely different, as Mr. Pertle asked, about access to their records and those kind of things. So, that's kind of sensitive.
Well, that's what bothers me. We're opening this up to a lot of people.
We have not agreed to have them to operate.
Not right now, but what happens in the future?
Well, in the future, some cities do, some cities don't. They could do, we haven't really vetted all this out, but he can certainly help them to choose equipment, to advise upon, the police department has three IT people. Is that right, chief? And so, not, he needs more. He needs either, he needs more or needs assistance and support from another larger group. And they get along well, but this would help that relationship better.
I'm just concerned about the security situation. The more people you open it up to, the more.
Right.
The more we are opening ourselves up.
I certainly accept and understand that concern. It is a concern that I know that we will, we will look into and make sure that we do not do anything that would jeopardize our security, and that being a very valid concern.
Yes.
And I appreciate that. The comparing to other departments is not a concern at this point, not in this discussion. That's a separate discussion altogether. So, any other discussion on this item?
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Make a note at six one. That concludes our business items of community interest. Mr. Moore?
For my sesquicentennial moment this month, I'd like to talk about our proposed time capsule. The city's Historical Preservation Commission is undertaking this task. Probably, it will be buried at either Old City Hall or somewhere near the library. They haven't decided yet. But the first thing we need to do is decide what we're going to put in it. And what kind of things would we want people in the year 2120 in Longview to know about us living here in Longview today? If you have any suggestions whatsoever, you can send them. We have a web address here planning at longviewtexas.gov. We want to try to fill this up with, with things that are typical of our life today in Longview. You know, I'm just pulling off the top of my head. I'm guessing something about the state championship may be, maybe in the, in the time capsule. But if you have suggestions, seriously, send them to our planning department. Second, I'm going to have a town hall meeting on July 9th at 7:00 PM at the Pine Tree ISD Community Center. I'll present a brief update status on all of our bond projects, but the primary focus of the meeting is to solicit input on what we want to have as improvement at McQuarreter Park. Before the election, we told folks that when we were starting to improve our, our existing parks, that we would seek public input on what we're going to do. And so, here's your chance. Finally, we're all going to enjoy a three-day Memorial Day weekend this coming weekend, and I would just ask that, that everybody take a moment to remember the people that gave their lives to make us the country that we are today, because that's what it's all about.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone. First, I would just like to say thank you to my sorority sisters. I did have one to stay with me. She's my ride or die. We did pledge together, so thank you, Elsa, for staying. Also, just to comment, I was sitting, and I've been thinking since the storm, you know, the storm brought about a lot of bad things. There were a lot of things that happened, but I thank God that I live in a city where the good outweighs the bad. So, I'm grateful today for that.
Thank you, Ms. Snoddy. Mr. Wright?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to commend the fire department and the police department on their banquets last couple of weeks. It's always great to honor those men and women that work really hard for our city. And what we went through with the storm was a great time to recognize them as well. Also, to the lovely ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated for your community service, wanted to recognize that publicly and say that we do acknowledge that. And that's it.
Mayor? Thank you, sir. Ms. Ishar?
I just wanted to kind of echo what we heard from citizen comments. I thought Mr. Edwards was very gracious in coming to give a compliment, because we don't always just receive compliments here, but the storm certainly brings out the best in people. And I'm always really touched at neighbors helping neighbors, and I'm also always so, so proud of our first responders and how they get out and really connect with people. And our very own mayor was out delivering Chick-fil-A to those first responders in the dark. But people are really out there because they care about each other, and that just always touches my heart. I also wanted to brag a little bit. I think Ingrid was here last month talking about Connect Longview, which is a new program in development services that helps bring volunteers that want to give back to their community in touch with projects that need it. So, what a perfect time that was. And they set up a hotline, and she told me they did 50 to 60 projects where, you know, volunteers were coming into our community that wanted to help, and they needed that connection. So, they've been out to help 50 or 60 Longview residents with a brand-new program, but awesome job. I was really proud to see that take off. So, just really proud to live in Longview. Good job, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Yes, I have to tell you that it was, I was really happy not to have to run a campaign this year, but I do want to thank all the people of District Five for their support over the last few years. Really, your, the confidence, I guess, that you show in us up here is a great thing, and I just want to tell you all in District Five how much, and in Longview, that I appreciate it. When I first started, my very first meeting, four years ago, I recognized Dawson Penn. Dawson was a freshman, and he had won the tennis state championship for, 4A, I think it was, the district's Spring Hill was in. Well, this year, his sister, as a senior, won the state championship, so I wanted to recognize her, Lexi Penn. And congratulations to Lexi. She's not here tonight, but wonderful thing.
Have her come in another meeting day. We'll recognize her publicly.
Okay. Also, I want to thank everybody for attending our meeting last Tuesday. We talked, we took a look at what was going on at George Ritchie on the extension between Gilmer Road and McCandon Road, and talked about what people hoped to see, how, how they wanted to see it develop over the next few years. And I just want to thank, and there's my wife right there, pointing something out, and that's our new superintendent on the right with the blue shirt on. And we talked about how people wanted to see that develop, and we had a great turnout. We really did. Normally, if we could have seven or eight people at a town hall meeting, I'm thinking how wonderful that is. We had about 40 or 50 people at this, so it was really good turnout, and we got some good input from the people of the, of District Five. And along those lines, the Longview MPO survey is out there. Here's a copy of the survey, and you can go to longviewtexas.gov/mobility2452045. You can see that on the bottom. And share your priorities on how to improve our highways, our public transit routes, freight, bicycle, and pedestrian, and much more. So, we'd love for everybody in the city to take that survey. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pertle?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Bonds?
Okay. Longview Public Works employees are continuing to perform bulky item service to help remove storm debris across the community during the next several weeks. As efforts are focused on collecting storm debris, please be patient with regular bulky item collections. Residents needing debris removed can schedule bulky item services by calling 903-237-1240 during open business hours or through the City Send app. And I just want to say a shout-out to those men and women. They are out there cleaning up the streets, and it is just amazing to see what they're doing to help the citizens. And you don't know how much the citizens appreciate it. I've had so many people call me and say, "Thank you so much for helping us get these trees and stuff out of our yards and off our curbs and stuff." So, be patient. We're coming. We're going to hit your neighborhood sooner or later, but just be patient. And thank you to all those workers that are out there doing this. This is a dangerous, dangerous job to be doing, and I appreciate their efforts. And please be safe if you're trying to do your own thing. Don't do things that you don't know how to do, so please be safe with that. Extremely grateful to the volunteers who have helped clean up the storm, including the Texas Baptist Men. As this group prepares to leave Longview next week, we're looking for others to step up to help with debris collection. Particularly, anyone who is willing to, and experienced with the chainsaws, let us know by emailing CL@longviewtexas.gov. The Longview, City of Longview also will be closed in observance of Memorial Day on Monday, 27th. All cities also resume regular business hours on Tuesday, May 28th. We surveyed 100 people, and all 100 people agree, your family or business would be perfect for playing Family Feud. Sign up today to participate in this popular event, the City of Longview's Fireworks Freedom Celebration, this July the 4th. It's a lot of fun. Come out and enjoy yourself. It's, it's a blast. For more information about city events, go to longviewtexas.gov/calendars. Upcoming events, Arts View Children's Theater, production of Amazing Grace, opens tonight, runs through this Saturday, May 25th. The show is full of creativity and imaginative plays, includes a talented and diverse cast of East Texas teens. Movies on the Plaza returns to Heritage Plaza with a full-length feature film. Mary Poppins returns on Saturday, June the 1st. Enjoy food from local food trucks, plus free popcorn and sodas. The movie will start at dark. Longview Comic Convention is a two-day event being held at MonCob Convention Activity Complex, so it'll be bringing together a diverse list of guests, vendors, artists, and fan groups in an affordable, family-friendly environment. Longview Comic Con will be held June 1st and June 2nd. Longview Main Street Program and 100 Acres of Heritage invite you to join us for our first downtown wine swirl festival. Proceeds of the event will benefit 100 Acres of Heritage, efforts to promote and revitalize downtown Longview. Longview Downtown Wine Swirl will be held from 4 to 8 on Saturday, June the 8th. For more information, go to longviewtexas.com/events. What a bunch of good stuff going on. Okay. Also, there's a ton of graduations going on, and I just want to congratulate all the kids that are getting out of school for your completion of both your college and your high school careers. I've had the privilege of being at a couple of them. My last one was at Longview High School, and we were so honored to have Matthew McConaughey come and give the commencement address. You know, he's a native of Longview and was excited to be here. And, you know, it's really neat when you see someone like that willing to come back and do that. And, you know, I honestly don't know how that happened. I mean, I know how it happened. I don't know, I can't believe he agreed to come back. But Dr. Wilcox has got tentacles that stretch out a long way, and he asked him to come, and he said yes. And he came back and gave a nice commencement address and spurred a lot of excitement throughout the community, which is good. It's nice to see him come back and recognize Longview and take part in events and go to places to eat and see people and take pictures. And I feel sorry for the guy. I don't know how he lives. People clamoring for his attention, wanting to touch him and take pictures of him and all those things. It's just a strange thing, but he, he does it well, and I appreciate him coming back. I enjoyed graduation at Longview High School. I had two of my nieces graduate. My niece Madeline graduated, and she's going to be going to Texas A&amp;M. And my other niece, Alex, who's in the back here tonight, stand up and say hi, Alex. Alex graduated from Longview High School. And she's going to Kilgore College. But let me just say something about Alex. Alex is the first, you all know Alex. I've talked about her many times. You know, she has Down Syndrome.[1673.87]